Love that.
Hey Bill, can you hear us? Bill, can you hear us? Hey Bill, can you unmute yourself if you can hear us? Hey Luke, can you hear us?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thanks.
Yes.
He's, he's joined. Do not.
Read my mind.
Melissa Yusup, Mayor Proton.
Olivia Walzmann, Councilor.
Erin Hyder, Assistant City Manager.
Jose Madrigal, City Manager.
Bob Rammer, Police Chief.
Bryce Current, Durango PD.
Jessica Buell, City Counselor.
Great, thank you, and I will-
Bill Todd Hill is also here.
Oh yes, Bill Todd Hill, thank, Todd Hill, thank you.
Interim City Attorney.
Perfect, thank you, Bill. Um, do we need to, has he been promoted to panelist? Okay, great, thank you. Um, I'm gonna start, as I start every study session and city council meeting with a land acknowledgement. This represents my statement, it is not a statement of council as a whole or other individual council members. For thousands of years, this region has been home to numerous people, bands, tribes, and nations. Each had their distinct culture, artistic expression, and community mores. In particular, this region was the ancestral home of the Nuchu, Dene, Pueblo, Hopi, multiple Apache bands, and various other tribes and Latinx people who used and stewarded this land. I recognize that indigenous peoples were forcibly removed from their ancestral lands by the US government, and it is important to recognize that the narrative of this region has mostly been told from the dominant perspective without recognition of those who came before us and who, to this day, continue to thrive, create, and connect with this land. Thank you for your respect in acknowledging this legacy. Great, so today, we have on the agenda, um, start with some new business, and also, I think, maybe review of the, um, March 21st study session agenda, then we'll go into municipal court procedures, and then, um, we'll go into, uh, the monthly financial ports, reports with Devon, so. Devon will be, oh, she's in the back, perfect, there we go, okay. So let's open up to, um, let me just, before we start into new business, let's review the 321 agenda. Um, I think right now, what we have on there is, um, council retreat follow-up, some of the items that came out of that, and the library district discussion and timeline. And there might necessarily be, there might be some space for something to be added, if, um, we deem appropriate. So does anyone have any new business? No? Well, I do. So, uh, one of the things I, I wanted to see if council wanted to discuss, and possibly even at the next study session, is, you know, we had the RFP on the asset that the city owns, on College, and, um, uh, College and, uh, what is it, Fifth Avenue? The, the parking lot, which was kind of derailed by that application process, as we all know it, we had to shut that down in the meeting, and it's been put on hold, and I think, I'd like to ask council if there's support for two things. Think, one, people did apply, and they put a lot of effort into it, and my own view is I believe they deserve some feedback on that process. Um, so that may be one item, and then the other is, what, um, I want to just make sure I cover what I wanted to say, um, maybe some discussion of how to go forward with considering the use of this site. Um, is there a way, you know, do you wanna go back to that RFP, do we want a full different, a different process? So I, I just think that we, it was important enough to us before to do this, and I'm wondering, I'd at least like to see some, uh, discussion of what needs to happen, or a timeframe for, maybe we think about it down the road at this point, and then I'd also like to see some, a discussion if there's a willingness to provide feedback to those that did apply.
What's the typical process for, like, RFP feedback?
Well, uh, usual-
Wasn't typical.
Yeah, it's like, not a very typical, uh, process, and one that ends, um, at the end of this, so, uh, you know, I think that there's, since the RFP is, is done, you would have an opportunity, uh, to provide feedback in regards to the proposals, and maybe something that, whether you wanna continue and go through another RFP process, or you wanna pause, or what, what, whatever there, there is. Um, it did, this is kind of a new one, because it did kind of get stuck, and just kind of like cliffhanger and then it. And I do know sometimes there's, uh, it's a little difficult at times for parties who've placed a lot of information into their, their proposals, and maybe wanna have an opportunity to receive feedback, so.
When we typically give fe- feedback, do we give, like, the matrix ratings that we've all did, or no?
Let me, is Jared on?
Yes.
Jared, who's purchasing, can kind of talk a little bit more, uh, about what's typical relation to the feedback for those that, uh...
Because at that first stage, it was all fair playing field, so, I mean, like, I'm-
Jared, you should be able to speak if you need to.
Right, this is Jared, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
We hear you.
Um, so, so to your question, uh, Councilor Buell, our, our typical process when we do a debrief is we will take the notes that we've collected from all the various, um, evaluators, uh, and the aggregate scoring of the evaluation, and we will share that information, we don't share individual evaluator's scores. Um, those are actually destroyed as part of our process, uh, it's the aggregate score that we are interested in. This one is a little bit interesting, because we do have, uh, a different aggregate score for council than we do for staff, but, uh, but again, that would be the extent of what we tend to share in typical procurement procedures.
So I am fine personally sharing that aggregate score with, uh, all, all the applicants. Um, in terms of going forward with another RFP, I would, I think, like to see, because I know we're doing the Civic Center, um, engagement session coming up next week, uh, yeah, and then, I'd kind of like to see how that plays out, and, you know, what, before I figure out, maybe, like, what's-
And, and, yeah, and I wanna be real clear, because I wanna, I don't wanna get into much of a discussion. I'm not certain we'll resolve something the next week, but I do believe that maybe there's a, a, you could set a placeholder next week through some discussion, or we're gonna come back. And I, I also wanna say that, you know, it wasn't a standard, it got shut down in the process, and I, I feel an obligation to some of those, that, to the team that did present, and then had worked on it, to at least give some feedback of, you know, is this, was this of interest to council? Uh, was it an interesting idea or concept, or is it something that, you know?
Well, for that particular group, I mean, one, they made it to the final round, and two, they did get a lot of feedback from council during the process. So I'm not really where, I was more just like, for, in general, everyone that applied, here's your scores, kind of, and so that's what I would support for right now.
I would support that too, uh, uh, here's your scores, and every kind of, and outreach to them, thank you for your application, um, and, um, any kind of update we can give them on, on, that we will be potentially opening the, you know, I don't know, looking at this again in the future, um, and time, time to be determined, um, and, uh, just kind of communicating with them, what we can communicate with them on the process, and thank, thing, thanking them for their participation in the process, so that kind of outreach, I think would be great. Um, but following up, I'm not, uh, next week, I'm not ready for that.
I don't have the, in my own mind, what, what's the appropriate thing, I just wanted to raise it, because it's kind of business that's left hanging.
Right.
Yeah, when is the information published? When, when can the public see what the concepts were, is that at a certain point?
Jared, can you, uh, answer what is, uh, what I would say, what is open, uh, public information, and then what is confidential, right, information that isn't, uh, shared in regards to those responses?
So, uh, again, in this process, typically, all of the documentation remains, remains sealed until the process is complete, as the process is complete now, uh, I do believe, uh, there's, there's a definition of a project file, and that includes many of the things I already referenced here. And I do believe it, it includes the, so those, those are things that can be shared.
There was a cough, can you, so is the proposal that was submitted, public information now, is that what I understood?
I believe at the, at the end of these processes, which this one has closed, I believe it becomes public information.
So, so the, the process is closed, I, I just wanna be very clear, the process is closed, so it is public information, everything that is submitted?
Yes, it is, it is now available.
Okay, very good, because I think our community should also know, I'm, I agree with, uh, what both of you said about, uh, giving feedback to the ones that applied and submitted their concept, but I also think that our community should be aware what was proposed, and how our town could look like, and I also think that maybe an extension of the topic you bring up, it's worthwhile for council to have a discussion on how multiple properties, could be developed in close cooperation with community and public feedback, so not just the train parking lot, but also River City Hall, also with, uh, the 9R building puts, put, uh, opportunities, because it seems we are addressing individual projects without looking at the whole picture, and I think with the river, uh, with the train park, um, not going forward at this point, in the way we went through the RFP process, it also creates an opportunity to revisit the fire station location, for example.
The pub- public engagement process, like we're doing next week?
That is just for the Civic Center.
So I don't want us to get resolving around that, and I also do wanna point out, just from a scheduling, we are meeting with the Fire District in March, and that will be an update on that, so I wanna, and we already had a conversation where it was very clear to us, from the Fire District, that that part of River City Hall is no, that part of, um, the city asset on the train lot is not an option for changing traffic patterns, so I, I do wanna just say, I was trying to keep it very narrow, uh, and is there a discussion going forward on that?
Um, I think the three of us agreed to give feedback back to them.
Agreement to give feedback back, um, and then, for a new council, what it may be is that you guys are putting that on an agenda item at some time to discuss.
Yes.
Um, I, I, because I wanna be very careful that the Fire District is already, we already have a meeting with them to discuss that site. I think it's the first week in March.
The last week of March.
Is it, okay, the last-
March 30th.
Okay, and then, um, there's already a, a process in play to do, look at the 9R building, and do that, so I don't wanna-
Yeah.
Get us too engaged. Okay, is, so where there's consensus on providing feedback, I appreciate your suggestion, I also wanted to remind us of the calendar. Um, any other items, or any other discussion on this point?
Yeah, I, I, I do wanna revisit how you summarized that, because at the council, we have never, when, 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 when the, um, River City Hall project got canceled for the combined police department and the Fire District Building Station, we never took that opportunity, in the end, the Fire District needs a station, so they have selected 9R building, that got a lot of community feedback, so we, as a city council, should look at the vision and the long term, what we can make happen for the Fire District. Now, when you say the, uh, the train parking lot is not an option, it is an option, and, uh, there is concerns for traffic, as you said, which is the same-
Hal, Hal said that it's not an option for them anymore, that it wouldn't fit there, he said that in a meeting, in a public meeting.
He, he did, um, how-
What are you repeating?
I'm repeating that you said it's an option, Hal, the chief of the Fire Department said that, I'm, I don't, you don't tell me what to do, actually.
All right, I'm gonna, actually, I'm gonna-
I can say, I can talk however I want, I don't file open records requests on you, I'm talking to you.
Excuse me one moment, I, I'm gonna stop this right now, because I also wanna make clear, we were in a meeting, Hal, I asked him again, and he said, you know, other sites, and he said his, this is his plan, why it wouldn't work, I'll also remind people that, Olivia, you also talked about a private conversation you had with Al Harper about using this site for this purpose. So I wanna be very clear that we act as a council, not as individual counselors, especially in discussion of assets. So on that note, I'm gonna actually move us on.
Great.
All right, today, we have the chief and the deputy chief here, and, um, before I start, let me just say, I went to the award ceremony, and I was so touched by that, it was the end of February, and, um, I would encourage any council member to try to attend those in the future. I was particularly, I mean, all of them had great stories, but I was particularly moved by the folks who saved lives, and the story you told there, um, one, you know, I, I, in, uh, you know, in, and to be close to my home, I didn't even know somebody was out there dying, but you brought, you know, you saved someone's life, so I, um, I just wanna start by acknowledging that, and I think it's a wonderful tradition, and I would encourage council to try to attend that in the future, it's, um, wonderfully rewarding, and it's, um, uh, also the 911 team was there, and I wanted to recognize them and the work that they do, so, on that note, I'll turn it over to Fay.
Sure, uh, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council, just to kind of set the, the table, if you will, for this discussion. Uh, municipal court is a, uh, a tricky department, and the reason I say that is because if you look on our org chart, it's gonna show like, under the city clerk, and in actuality, I kind of, I call it a three-legged stool. Uh, you have the police department, you have the court clerk that handles the administrative portion staffing, and then you have the, well, it's actually four, but those two go to myself, but, uh, then you have the city prosecutor, that's under the city attorney, and then you also have the municipal court judge that i- is under the, the city council. Uh, so it does require some working together, uh, I think that there's some parts within the community, uh, specifically with some of the concerns we've had along the Park and River Trail, uh, with some of the illegal camping, uh, in regards to, you know, city, what are you doing, what is the roles to go through this? And I wanna make sure that as we set up through this portion of it, you know, there, there's different roles, and there's not one party that oversees the entire municipal court administration, and I think that's there for due process, right, that's there to make sure that there's a, there's a fair and partial process that goes through, uh, and that everybody has the opportunity to go through, um, the ability to have their, their case heard. So, I wanted to set it with that expectation, because sometimes when people see this, uh, they see municipal court, and they're like, oh, that's all under one roof, and it, it actually isn't. It's under the umbrella of the city, uh, but there's different people who have different responsibilities over portions of the court, which we all, uh, strive to work together.
Can you just clarify, I, I really appreciate this laying out, and I just wanna make sure I understand too, that, then, who is reporting underneath Fay again?
Uh, the, it's the municipal court clerk staff, so it's the administrative staff.
The administrative staff.
So the people who are processing the, the tickets, the citations, getting the cases ready for the judge, that reports through Fay.
Okay.
And then, um, I just wanted to add that, I wanted to remind council that when we did our evaluation of the municipal judge, we talked about some of the issues around sentencing and issues, and she provided us with some of the limitations. We had, and we discussed this after we came out of the evaluation, we had asked that she put together from her experience with municipal court, some of the recommendations that she might have for addressing municipal court. That is not today, uh, that is scheduled for its own, uh, session. Uh, Melissa, the Mayor Proton and I, when we met with her in, in, to give the feedback, talked about a possibly an April session, she would have been, uh, that had access to the interim, uh, city attorney for some time, and could probably come back. So we will, we should be receiving from the judge, a monthly in March, kind of, here's what's on my plate, here's some issues I need to address, and things like that, similar to how we get with the city attorney. Um, so I wanted to clarify that, and, um, she was not able to be here today to answer any questions that we might have of some of the things that come up. And, and we also have to keep in mind that hers is a part-time job, uh, in, in that regard, part, two part-time people, um, so that may also impact it. So I wanted to set that, but then, turn it over to, back to Jose or the chief, who's ever going next.
Absolutely, and I think that's a, a very good point, uh, Mayor, just to make sure that, um, the municipal court judge has a tremendous responsibility when she's looking at, uh, determining uh, the facts of the case and making a judgment on, on citations, uh, that is something that has other, uh, specialties and, uh, training and education that goes through it, that, that's not something that's in our bailiwick. Uh, so we're really gonna be talking specifically about things that we've been able to work with the prosecutor, court clerks, and ourselves, and then kind of patch in the municipal court judge when she has the opportunity to do so, as the mayor said, she, uh, works part-time here, and has another, uh, portion in with the state court, so we wanna be respectful of the time, but also thought it was a great opportunity to get out into the public, kind of, how the background of this works, um, as there has been several emails that have come in, and a lot of, uh, questions, and we're trying to respond to them, but there is frustration where, you know, there's a, a belief, if you will, that the PD can just go in there and take everything and move people out of the way. Uh, obviously, that's not, uh, that's not true, that's not how we, we handle with capacity, we have due process, so I'll pass that on to, uh, the police chief and, uh, Bryce, W Chief, to do the presentation.
Thank you, City Manager. Um, yeah, my name is Bob Rammer, Chief of Police, and, and Madam Mayor, thank you very much for the acknowledgement of the Hope Safety Awards, it's a real honor to have you there. Uh, there was an impact of our team, and we really appreciate that, and, uh, it would be great if anybody else can, uh, hand that in future, so we do believe it's a, a great way to, uh, celebrate our, our officers and our staff. Um, so this is a very complex situation, and we're hoping to educate both the council, uh, we've become very educated ourselves on the whole, the entire process with municipal court, um, and we also have our partners here, we have Fay, and we've got one of our new city prosecutors, uh, Jason Rela, and he's gonna also assist us as we continue to talk about this, other aspects of what municipal court is. Uh, how we got here was, we continue to evaluate our processes and our procedures, looking for efficiencies and effectiveness. And as we continue to evaluate our current statistics and the impacts police departments have on our community, what we continue to see is there's a certain amount of people that continue to have high utilization, high impacts on our community and our services as whole. And we were trying to figure out a way that we could focus in on those people, specifically on them, and their behaviors and their actions, that they contribute to these negative behaviors and various behaviors in our community that victimize, and create victims, not only in our community, but as, on our, our tourists, our community, our, our business owners, utilization of parks and trails and other services that we have out there. And, um, so we started these conversations months and months ago, in regards to with our courts, with our prosecutors, with our clerk's office, and to see where we're gonna go. Um, a lot of these are direct impacts that go back to such things as the COVID pandemic that occurred. We're still operating under, uh, the judicial order, um, which has COVID protocols at the jail. And so, like, right now, currently, we just got this notification last week, once a jail raises a certain population, then they stop taking people in on in custody arrests, um, from a classified felony and down, unless there's certain requirements that are met. Obviously, a lot of the issues we're dealing with municipal court are quality of life issues, they're either gonna be petty offenses, or they're going to be, um, low-level misdemeanors. And we can get into a little bit more detail on that, as far as, as, as a percentage of those cases that we do file, there, the appropriateness of the court. Under our current, uh, additional protocols with, um, an administrative order, 2201, which is issued out of municipal court, anytime we take anybody to jail on a, uh, municipal court charge or municipal warrant, warrants, they're automatically released on a personal recognizance bond once they get to the jail, and we'll go into detail on that as well. But these are all results of the, the pandemic, and they continually systematically, uh, create issues for us as we move forward, so we need to be creative and not do things as we continue to jail. Um, and then, so what I'll do real quick, so I'll give a quick overview, um, of what our municipal court process is, and all this information is coming from the Colorado Municipal League, and their court protocol guide that they put out a couple of years ago, which is extremely important. But as we all know, and maybe the public doesn't, City Durango is a whole city. But as we all know, and maybe the public doesn't, City Drango is a home city. And that authorization comes from Article twenty of our constitution. And municipal court is established under our municipal code of fifteen dot one. And that establishes that court system. And what's really cool about a home world city versus statutory world city is that we can adapt our ordinances to reflect our community values. And so we can say, okay, we are going to take certain behaviors and actions and criminalize them versus just adopting the state codes and and putting them into our municipal court under that charter action. And so we can become very specific to that. And there's a lot of laws out there that we enforce, which are kind of in our top ten realm that don't have a state level equivalent, such as urinating in public, defecating in public, drinking in public, consuming marijuana in public, camping, these type of things. Those are all specific to our charter. We can enforce those because of the fact that we have a home world. As the city manager said, we're a four legged stool. There's four equal components in municipal court, because a lot of times, a lot of people want to hear municipal court, they think of just the courtroom setting itself, the judge. There's actually four separate sections of that, and these are what have broken out. The police obviously start the process by identifying what that action or behavior is out on the street. And then we report the facts of that case as irrelevant to the the language within the ordinance itself and the culpability of the individual and match those up and we provide that. The clerk's office then files through the set of proceedings, procedures, they do all paperwork and everything else and provide that case through the discovery issues to both the defense and through our prosecution prosecutors are thirdly in the stool. And this is another thing we've done recently is we've hired two additional city prosecutors to assist the one prosecutor that we did have. So now we have each day of court covered, Monday, Wednesday and Friday, where before we were only having a prosecutor that was going to be on session on a Wednesday. So we've got that covered. Yes.
Is that already known as a recommendation, but that's already implemented?
Yeah. So some of the changes that we've got are starting to see, they're starting to come into effect now, which is great because we just haven't seen how that's going to affect us later down the road. But it's definitely that partnership. And this is the partnership, this is four components that we are trying to to work through and to get and to have these conversations. One of the challenges we have with that is we don't have a city attorney right. And the city prosecutors work for the city attorney. And so with that, that's been a challenge in itself as well, because.
Well, I'll say we have an interim city attorney.
We do, we do. But with with that transitional period, there's, he has a lot of work. He's got a lot of catch up. And when when Tony was here, he was great as well, but he was also trying to run the rest of the city and manage all the other duties that he had. And so until we have that stability, it's really going to, again, another challenge that we have to establish that, but with new people, again, we have new opportunity, which is is what we're looking for in regards to our partnership. And then the fourth leg of the of the stool is, as as Seabird mentioned, is the judge himself. And we have currently two judges that are on retainer with the city. And so we've got all those days covered as well. And with that, each of us have our own little realm. We've got our own little responsibility. That doesn't mean we can't work together and we can't partner. But we have to remain in separate functions. We have impartiality when it comes to the system itself, so we can work the process as it's designed to, go through our constitution and the state and within our charter of ordinances as well.
We're not going to communicate about individual cases, but obviously we're going to communicate about process, meaningful term process.
Through the Colorado Municipal League, there were several components, what they recommend with municipal court. They do believe that municipal court is an integral part of municipal government because again, it can be structured and tailored specific to our community and to what our values are for that quality of life, which we've got within our community. Municipalities can and should tailor their courts to address local issues and or tool to to address the concerns of the local community. Each community is going to be different. Denver's different than Grand Junction. Pueblo is different than Drango. Ortes is different than Pagosa Springs. And so that's where the the local ordinance itself aren't just blanket across the board like a statutory city. We can tailor those out specifically meet our needs here. We've done that in the past and and we've had revisions of the ordinances as well in order to 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 make it functionality. You know, with different groups that are out there, such as ACLU, or, you know, the the needs and the wants of the community as a whole.
Could you give an example?
Our camping ordinance are, you know, that was one that was specific. Our panhandling ordinance was another. Our loitering ordinance ordinance? Yeah, the sit in line, because that portion of it, we used to have just a specific loitering ordinance that you couldn't loiter anywhere within that. But then the the Supreme Court came through and they said that, no, there's a, there's a first amendment right to be able to fly a sign and to ask for help, which is the mannerism in which you could do it. So cities can still tailor their ordinances to say, okay, you can't do certain behaviors, like you can't touch somebody, you can't aggressively go after somebody. You can't cuss and use profanity, you can't block their way. So that's where the sit in line ordinance came into play and it was tailored specific to us. There's certain locations that you can't go to either, like in the medians at Walmart or college in Camino, because it's a safety issue. So we can look at those and we can, we can narrow the scope of that, but we can't just do this broad umbrella to prohibit all actions.
Separate status, for instance, it's, you know, a status, you need to be able to use the bathroom, use the restroom. But you can't do it in public in front of people. So it's an act versus a status.
Okay. Sleeping.
So we're looking at behaviors and actions.
Correct. Yeah, sleeping is a status.
And that's, in those statutory requirements come from the Supreme Court going all the way back to the sixties. You can be a drunk, but you can't be drunk in certain places in public. It's just like being a thief. You could be a known thief, but we can't arrest you for that. We can only arrest you for the act of theft, right? And so it's the same thing when it comes down to some of the other behaviors that are out there. We're not incriminating homelessness if we're going to go that route for the topic, which we'll end up getting to later in this conversation. But it's the other acts that are associated to to some of the, some of the people that that are experiencing homelessness. You know, and so we have to look at that very carefully, but it's not the status itself, it's the behavior and actions that we're looking at. Municipal courts can partner in service stewards of the community that are best equipped for local issues and nuances. So when we look at this, we look at access mental health. How do we look at these low level crimes in order to, you know, to help out? When we, when we look at, I'll apply to you services, that's a great example of diversion program. Because we can partner with this this advocacy group that's out there to be able to keep people out of the criminal justice system. We started a very similar system with with county court and our district attorney to be able to do an adult diversion, young person diversion program. And Jason is is already been exploring with his partner, you know, how do we extend that offer with them as well to partner? It's some more options and I'll get into that with CML's recommendations in a second. But our our courts provide a unique opportunity to introduce individuals to services instead of allowing individuals to keep revisiting the criminal justice system. And that's not the goal that we're looking, we're not looking at just incarcerating people, putting people in jail and doing that, because that doesn't necessarily change behavior. Sometimes that actually makes people better criminals. Sometimes that makes people create more crime, you know, because they're trying to pay off what they already had. So there's a huge circle of recidivism that we can get into if we do that. But we can use these low level opportunities through creative sentencing and creative conversation with with our prosecutors, our clerks, us and and with the judge and the partnership to hopefully be able to divert people out so they don't have these escalating behaviors. Some of the statistics that we've got, we see some of this behavior that has continued to escalate. And I've messaged some of this out to the council before, where, you know, we have somebody that, you know, they 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 have twenty, thirty violations. And, you know, we're waiting for something to happen because we continue to introduce them into the system. But then finally, that behavior escalates to the point where they assault one of our police officers. Or they assault somebody else with a major crime. And then all of a sudden, now we're taking you across the street to district court or county court. And then we're taking them, removing them, but we could have intervened earlier within that process, hopefully. And maybe it'll have an impact on that person and not create twenty or thirty other victims within our community.
If we can intervene early and often, we can deter that crime much sooner.
Right.
Which we hope. And that's, that's kind of one of the major goals we're looking at here as we focus our efforts on individuals. And I'll get into some specific numbers here in seconds, kind of highlight that as well. Some of the CML's best practices.
One question. Will you go back? I'm sorry, I don't want to just, I don't want to take you off course because you're doing, I really appreciate.
It's a long presentation.
Okay, okay, okay. I just, very quickly then, I I'm looking at number two. And I just wanted to kind of ask for some clarification on that, on tailoring the courts. That's an interesting thing to say. So I'm just curious, you know, municipalities can and should tailor their courts.
That's going to be my next slide.
Okay.
So when we, when the CML talks about tailoring our courts, that means that we're not specifically a criminal court, where we have people come in and you either plead guilty or guilt, not guilty, or no look contendee, which is no contest. And we're sentencing them either to a fine or to jail time or to probation or some other punitive aspect of it. We can tailor our municipal court in lots of different ways. We can be a problem solving court, we can be a behavioral court. We can be a deferment court. It depends on the on 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 the situation surrounding the individual as a whole. And Jason can help you with that as well. But what some of this, what we're looking at doing is these creative sentencing options or through restorative justice or through diversion programs out there. Is we can say, okay, what does this look like? We've already started working with one of the prosecutors, Mr. Wanger, about how do we introduce access into the system?
Yeah.
You know, to be able to say, okay, if we have somebody that's that's a, maybe a habitual drunkard in our community. And that's where their main pitfall is, is they can't stop drinking. How do we influence them? How can we, through creative sentencing, get that person to go to access mental health? To have a conversation, to get a diagnosis through a behavioral health specialist? And then have that treatment option potentially associated to to that person and tailored to be able to help them through that so that they don't, so we can break that cycle as a whole. And then if there is an issue later down the road where the the person continues to fail and they continue to struggle with this addiction issue that they've got, there's a consequence at the end of the day with the judge. And then they can introduce a different type of consequence, maybe at the end of the day, which provides a deterrent.
That's where the evidence based sentencing comes in. There has to be a deterrent at the end, too.
And that's that partnership between us, because the evidence based portion of it is, we have the information, we have the data. And that's where, you know, we know who we're contacting day in, day out. We know who we can pretty much assign a police officer to to walk around town and just continue to write tickets to and hopefully divert their their attention from whatever they're doing. But we need to be able to get that information to the courts in a manner where they can take that and 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 make a creative positive decision in that person's life. And that's where we need these additional partnerships, which we have established in our community to be able to help out. So we don't have these continual problems. So that's tailoring the the courts to to.
I see.
So some of the current procedures and struggles we're facing, and we'll go through each one of these all present first, please. But my job under the the code ordinances should be the duty of the chief of police to see the enforcement of all provisions of the code and all of the applicable statutes to preserve order and prevent infractions of law. So my job is to make sure that the laws be followed. And we have discretion and we'll look at that in our office reply that frequently to either traffic violators or criminal offenders or ordinance violators. And they hopefully are going to be able to deter that behavior. But if we can't, if we can't address an issue through either education, which a lot of times is a conversation, or if we can't do it through environmental factors, which maybe is lighting or boulders along Russo or something like that's going to influence that aspect of it, then we're going to do an enforcement action. And that's where the courts come into play. And last year, sixty six percent of our criminal cases came to municipal court. Sixty six percent of the work we did, as far as like looking at crime, came here. We did, you know, there was quite a bit of traffic actually, too, because this is where, this is where things should go. We're, we're, we're a municipal organization and we work for a municipal government. We have a municipal court. So we should be directing these teams here if we can. But if there's other larger aspects like domestic violence or DUI, or some of those other components of of crime, they can't come to municipal courts. We have to direct them to the appropriate county or district court. But the majority of our cases come here. What we found through our research is that sixty six, sixty seven people are committing fifty percent of our crime. That's a pretty staggering number. And if we can focus in on those sixty seven people and we can really work with those people to come up with some alternatives, so they're not committing crime, they're not committing harm, and they're not creating victims in their wake, then we can potentially reduce those numbers. We can increase the quality of life within our communities as a whole. Ten people have committed twenty percent of the overall crime that we're filing into municipal court. That's, that is amazing. And when I look at those numbers, the number one offender on that list of the top ten passed away in in September. And he died. And 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 this is kind of the tragic story that I'm that I'm going to tell, but he's still our number one offender. Even though he's already deceased. And he had so many offenses leading up to that time where I feel that we could have intervened in his life potentially. And we could have changed that direction in that. But instead, the result was he passed away at Iris Park. His friends called it in, so his friends had to go through the trauma. The fire department, EMS, our officers who performed CPR were unable to revive him. They have to experience that trauma of that death. You know, and then all the resources that are associated to that as well, through detox or the ER previous to that, all this right there. And that was an opportunity. And we're seeing it again, and we're seeing it again and again and again, because we can tell these tragic stories going back twenty years. And so how do, how do, how do we tailor our court in order to further that off and make sure that that doesn't happen? We know who these people are. And if we can have those people show up and be accountable for their actions and we can divert that away, that's a win for us, a win for our entire community.
I was talking to a sergeant when we were down at the camps the other day, and he has on video recorded telling this individual, hey, you're, you're not going to make it if something doesn't change. And, you know, multiple times, but the limit of our authority is to bring people before the magistrate. That's really our job. That's our life on the stool. And that's the limit is to bring people before the judge at that point.
And so the other portions of that is currently right now, because a lot of it has to do with the judicial orders that are out there and the limitations that we have at jail. We don't necessarily have a mechanism to get people before the judge as as Bryce says. We're not going to be taking people into custody on charges, especially low level charges. We used to do that. We used to, you know, if we caught somebody who was potentially fighting or just occurring a disorderly conduct downtown, it was really easy for us to put our handcuffs on somebody and take them to jail and have them posted bar. And that's not the 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 conversation going on across the state or the country right now. And I think we've done a really good job adjusting to that. We've got a sixteen percent reduction in our overall in custody arrests. And we're favoring summonses versus arrest by twenty six percent. So that's increased. You'll see that later tonight when I give our annual report. But that, that, that's a shift that our department's done in response to what our communities are telling us that they want. But we still need to figure out a way to get people to jail, because right now fifty percent of people aren't showing up. And when the fifty percent of people aren't showing up, then where are they at? And if they don't ever show up and there's no warrant being issued for their arrest, to be able to bring them before justice, then that that action and and all that work that that all of our organizations are doing is for naught. And they're just going to go out there and reoffend and create more victims in our community or impacts on our community. And of the fifty percent of people that are showing up, eighty percent of those right now are either being deferred or dismissed. And which is, you know, which is crazy as well. I went through our previous annual reports, over about twenty years. And, you know, the monetary revenues of municipal court is not necessarily, you know, a great measure of anything. But I thought it was an interesting measure, too, to to bring into the conversation is, you know, twenty years ago, municipal court was generating between three hundred and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars with revenue based off of fines and surcharges and court fees that were being brought in for those offenses. This last year, we brought in a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, you know, and I think that's a direct correlation to only half the people showing up, because it's about halfway revenue that's being associated to that. And we know that, that, you know, growth in the city has created more demand for services as well.
Can I ask you a very basic question? You also have the presentation later today. And can you just run through the the process for me very shortly? Because in the other presentation, it goes from warnings, arrests, citations and other. And I'm just trying to figure out at what point does it become a case that goes to the municipal court?
Well, it depends on the violation. So and and we have those broken out in our annual report as well. You know, what's going to be county, which are going to be municipal court. And so that's an officer discretion issue on the street. Though what we do believe is, again, because we're a municipal organization, that if it fits the criteria to go to municipal court, that's the appropriate court for it to go to.
Okay, so a warning, well, a warning I shouldn't doesn't go to, but an arrest and a citation, that's.
Yes.
I have some more questions, but.
Okay, absolutely. So that's, so that's the current procedure, state the word at the moment. Now I'm going to turn this over to Fay.
So this is just some basic information on court procedures. Obviously, we have two current court clerks that are full time. We have one part time that we are attempting to hire at the moment that we are actually interviewing for next week because of our increased caseload. We were running between twelve hundred and fourteen hundred cases annually, and we're now up to two thousand. So about thirty five percent of all the cases are given a deferred judgment. And that does entail more staff time, simply because they're handling that file on multiple occasions. On a case that goes straight to a judgment, they're just going to come in and pay their ticket. They handle the case in one time. They take that payment, they assign the points to their record and they move on. On a deferred judgment, they're given ninety to a hundred and twenty days where they don't reoffend. So the file has to be calendared, repulsed, then reviewed to see if they have had any violations during that time period. Then they do a report for the judge. The judge then has to have the file again, review it, see if they are now going to be free of this judgment and then take it back to open court and dismiss the case. So there's definitely a bit longer process when there's deferred judgments. Is thirty five percent the right number? I don't know. That's obviously not my call, but that's where we're at right now. And that's kind of what we're throwing out there for consideration.
Hey, I said in this court a couple of times, reevaluation. And what I saw was mostly these were traffic violation where the offender was given a chance to, they're possibly going to take some other course or something. And that would result in them not having freeze down there on their record.
If they get a deferred judgment. Uh, if they get a deferred judgment and they have no violations, it's my understanding that they end up with no points on their on their record.
So of the thirty five percent.
Yeah, I do not have that statistic. Um. And the other interesting part of that is if if we could find a way to determine how many of those are repeat offenders. I mean, is this somebody who got one speeding ticket and it's a deferred judgment? Because it's your first mistake and you know, you should be given that chance. Or if it's someone who has multiple violations and is given a deferred each time. But that's something that we also don't have the stats on.
Okay, the next part is Jason.
Sure.
So as Chief said, a a large majority of the cases coming through municipal court are dismissed or deferrals, which for your average person works, someone comes in, they plead guilty if they don't do the same violation for a certain mere period of time and they pay restitution or 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 certain requirements. It's dismissed after the deferral period, but with those repeat offenders that constantly come in, there's really no alternative for the judge to issue a PR bond, which is really using resources for the police department and it doesn't really stop the behavior and help the community. Uh, there's opportunity for certain programs like diversion programs with kind of like a but it links people up to services they might receive. And if they get all the services and they do certain things, then the case is dismissed, but they are going through a program to make sure the behavior is corrected. And and there's also opportunity for treatment courts, which would focus on certain things that would be problems for the community. Uh, some communities have homeless court, some people have, some programs are focused on mental health court and drug abuse. And that works sort of like a diversion program where someone is given the opportunity to get through their program and if they finish it, then that conviction's not on their record. And the judge isn't issuing warrants because there's not a reason to issue a warrant for these type of offenses and there's not an alternative besides just asking them to come to court and crossing your fingers that they they do. And for those repeat offenders, they they just get arrested over and over again and there's really not there's, there's not a solution right now. That would be a discussion between the police department, the clerk's office and the city attorney's office. It it would have to come out of someone's budget, but there's there's that program at the district attorney's office and the individual offender pays part of it. So it really depends on the person's income and and who decides payment would would come from. Sometimes it's Medicaid. It it just depends on where the the opportunity is for the the payments. Uh, the social service community, they they currently already do work with programs through the district attorney's office and the county court in the the district court. So there is the ability to to respond.
Okay, and the fourth leg of the stool is a judge and unfortunately she was not be able to be able to be here today as the mayor mentioned. Uh, we have our previous conversations conversations with the judge, um, both Judge Norvell and Judge Law. And uh, Judge Norvell was extremely uh knowledgeable when he came to talking about the the different challenges in the in the process that was um, available to municipal court. Uh, but one thing I found interesting under under our municipal code was the oath and bond. And just like all of us, we all took the the very similar oath and bond. Um, and the judge is also bound by us as well, um, to ensure that uh, we're, you know, working on the constitution of the of this country, this state and our oath and charter as well. So, um. What our goal is by having this conversation and our goal, I think amongst everybody here is is really to enhance your strategic goal, our strategic goal of enhanced livability and sense of place. And what we want to do is is we want to reduce victims. Uh, we want to reduce recidivism, prevent reoffending, increase accountability with the offenders, increase effectiveness policing and establish positive relationships with everybody we we encounter. Um, and expand services amongst our community to give people treatment so we can break this cycle. And uh, create deterrence overall. And that, and I believe, you know, what Jason said and 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 working with the courts and partnerships is we're going to be able to do this stuff. Um, if we can get everybody to the table and and just have these great, very collaborative conversations in order to go achieve it. Um, we can make alignment with with county clerks in the court, the court's office, sorry, the the county court as well. Because of the fact that they see a lot of the same problems we do. And they don't want to have that increased workload as well. And so, you know, if if people are graduating essentially from municipal violations to county and district violations, that's an extreme drain on their resources as well. So they have a vested interest, just like we do in order to have that early prevention, that early intervention as a whole. And so I I'm glad Jason is taking on that task to have these conversations with county and to see if we can actually align some of these services. Um, because I think this court could absolutely help out in alignment with that as well. Um, but you know, at the end of the day, what we what we really, really need is just this partnership. So if, you know, whatever creative sentencing issue we come to, whatever deterrence we come to to try to help people out. If they are not in compliance with what the judge is telling them, then that's really what jails are for. And I'm not saying we're trying to put everybody in jail or incarcerate them or anything. And that's why we're trying to keep as many people out of jail on the pre-sentence issue as we can. And we want to try to find alternatives for people as we move forward. But at the end of the day, we still have that option available to us that if they're not doing what the judge tells them to do, then there's a consequence. And people need to be afraid of what that consequence is and it should be an inconvenience and it should, you know, be consequential. So that it deters that future behavior and makes them at least think twice moving forward, you know, with whatever actions they want to try to do.
And I I think that's what we're missing right now, being out on the street, went out with the with um, the teams yesterday and spoke to individuals and you know, it's really where we we're lacking legitimacy. And if you, you know, you look at the definition of legitimacy, I mean, number one, it's trust. And an another pillar of it is, um, you know, the the responsibility of our authority. And and how seriously we take that as a police department. But the third pillar of the of legitimacy and and legitimacy is one of the biggest de-escalation tools that you have. When I'm driving down the road and I see a state cop, I put my hand, my my foot on the brake, you know, immediately. And it's that legitimacy that I feel inside my soul when I see a police officer growing up. And if you don't have that, um, you're not going to have the ability to de-escalate either. And I experienced that yesterday, um, going out and the third pillar of of legitimacy. And uh, and I'm going to read it because I thought it was pretty precise. The willingness of the residents to defer to the law and police authority. So the willingness to defer. And I think that's what we're missing right now. Um, because they know, you know, that if they don't appear, there's not going to be an arrest warrant. If they don't appear, they're not going to go to jail. And I I agree completely with what the chief's saying is that has to be a foregone conclusion as well. There has to be a deterrence. And for us to continue, um, and I think we've been um, we've we've really flexed on our part with the with the tickets and not arresting people and doing as much as we can on our part. But at the end of the day, we do need a deterrence to be able to de-escalate and and have legitimacy.
And we've seen this. We tell stories all day long of different incidents we've had. And you know, we've had incidents recently where it's a trespassing intoxicated at Doubletree. We go down there, we educate the person, we move them on without consequence, but then he immediately goes over to Liquid World and shoplifts and gets a beer and opens it up and drinks it. They, we get there, we were out of a ticket. He's like, give me my ticket. And he goes back inside, steals another beer and opens it up in the store and just says, give me another ticket. You know, so that's the, that's the, you know, how these things escalate. And then, you know, a couple, there there was a couple hours later, he was at the the Speedway and he was spraying gas all over, gas pumps all over the place, you know? And so it's it's it becomes problematic when we can't intervene early. You know, and so Grand Junction recently went through a very similar type of where, you know, people were just like, okay, give me my ticket and they go on and continue to do something else. Um, they went through a very similar process and we're having discussions about today. About how we revamp, how do we reinvest in into this uh, into the system to make it effective. Um, some of the options we have up to us that that we looked at was we can do nothing, obviously no change. Um, we can no longer enforce municipal ordinances and codes and accept behaviors and actions of these people on the street. We can accept suspects acting with community and not provide customer service to our citizens, which is continue to create victims within our community. We or we can tailor municipal court to address local issues, which we've done, but I think we can do a much more robust job, build build systems behind it. And develop and instill a system of consequence and create a deterrence as we were just speaking about. And expand sentencing options to include include, and these are some of the things that 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 we'll continue to talk about. Alternative court process, services from access, deferred sentences, jail time, community service, fines, drug and alcohol treatment, restitution and and navigation systems to help people go in different directions in their different times of need. And each individual's unique and different too. And I think that's really the benefit of municipal court is we can look at that. We can focus in on individuals to say, okay, how is this going to work? We know that one system doesn't work off for everyone. And again, that gets back to Councilor Yusef's question, how do we tailor the court? And that's what this does. This gives is this gives a little bit of personality.
Something the chief always talks about is somebody that, you know, offends on the weekend and they have a job on Monday. We want them to be at that job. It's not going to help us for somebody to be in jail, be missing out on their, you know, opportunity to support their family and everything else. Um, it's the repeat offenders. Uh, they're just causing problems and and there's no deterrent.
Can I ask you something? Because you're going through the next steps here. When when I listen to your presentation and look at the data? It's split up between traffic cases and and criminal cases. And when I look at the the data and everything you go over, is for traffic cases, is this an equally problematic situation? Or is it is less complex? Because if you implemented penalty assessment options for motor vehicle crash without injury? Would that already take away a whole bunch of work? And and if you do it, would you still be able to uh, address repeat violators that just get tickets and don't show up?
Currently, right now, my focus is on crime. Right. Yeah, and when we look at traffic, we we the the end result of what we look at is how do we reduce accidents and injury accidents? And we've been doing that and we've been very effective in doing that. Um, Fay explained some of the traffic processes going through right now, um, to ensure that, you know, people are compliant with that. But right now, my main effort, my focus on on the court right now is to really focus in on that criminal aspect of it, because that's what's creating us the most havoc. Those are the emails that you all see. It's the phone calls that you all receive, um, the same ones that I do. And and traffic is another aspect to that, absolutely. And in but it and it falls more than a quality of life issue, but that's not the part that is out there just being rampant. If we had street racers, drag racers and everything else, it'd be a hold for um, a conversation, I believe. But right now, you know, I really want to focus on the criminal aspect of it and then we can work through the process. And then I think you'll align with the courts, you know, in in our overall process, once we get some of these other systems in play as well.
Yeah, so when when you look at the crime, because I I was assuming that, but I'm glad you confirmed that. So it's more about the process and preventing situations like the one you described about that person that passed away. Now, uh, the weekly updates you provide are really good to see, about burglaries and thefts and so on. But when you look at the individuals or the the time consumption or things where you structurally hope to prevent someone going in a vicious cycle? What kind of uh, in the topics are we talking? Is it theft, vandalism, substance abuse? Is it uh, sleeping on Russo? What what are the key backgrounds?
Just one second. I have, I have this here.
I'm sure you do. I have to say, I'm very appreciative of the presentation and the education.
Our top ten offenses for municipal court right now, one is trespass. Uh, two is obtaining goods and services, which is theft. Um, three is open container, four is disorderly conduct. Um, five is actually a failure to comply with the parking notice.
What is it?
Failure to comply with the parking notice. So um, that's where boots get put on there, not paying a parking ticket. Um, number six is failure to appear. Uh, seven is obscene conduct, which is either urinating or defecating in public. Um, number eight is illegal camping, uh, which is different than trespassing. And number nine is unlawful acts and unlawful acts are typically going to be um drink drinking, you know, that's some type of insanity that goes along with that. And then the number ten is assault. So I'm I'm sorry, unlawful acts is is going to be juvenile acts. So it's going to be underage consumption, possession of alcohol by juveniles, which is our number nine. So those are our top ten offenses right now that we that we continually focus on. And another, the interesting component, you mentioned burglaries and the wicked reports. If we're able to minimize the effort that we have to continue to put into these low level qualities of life issues? That's more time that we can spend on these high level crimes, these part one crimes, you know, to go out there and be more proactive and more strategic.
If there's a deterrent and they see the cops, they're going to say, oh, no, it's cops. Right now it's more just finish drinking, maybe go get another one, you know, seriously, there's no, there's, there's no legitimacy there. It's a little bit of a deterrent. I think we can, because it spreads. I, you know, this isn't my first rodeo either, came from another jurisdiction. I've seen functioning courts. And it spreads fast and they say, we're down at the river yesterday and there's you know, there are certain camps that they're cleaning up after themselves, but there's one specific camp where there was trash, but not regular trash, little trash. Tons of little trash, about every two inches, all the way, all the way down to the river. And and that's different and that's different. And then when you have somebody that doesn't care and is not willing to pick it up and there's no deterrent, that's what.
Smoking with the water on.
So so may I also ask, I I also want to be careful. We don't have one leg of the stool here to 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 talk about the what's functioning and and what where their hands may be tied. So I do want to recognize that. I did just have a quick question before we moved on to for Jason, if I may. You you spoke earlier and and I was just curious, um, you're a new prosecutor with the city rather than uh, you you've recently joined the team, is that correct?
Yes, I was a prosecutor somewhere else, so I I I I have a good idea of the process, just not in this this court.
Because the the judge, actually, when we met with the judge, felt that there were some changes within the prosecution that might need to happen and that's out of her jurisdiction. I was just wondering if you've um, been able to, and that might also be for Bill Tuttle as the interim city attorney? Able to implement any changes to the the practice that has been for prosecution?
Yes, and and I talked to her about that. That was from an audit that was done and and that's more what ethically a judge is supposed to do and not supposed to do. So it's not not sentencing things, it's not uh, it it's not kind of deferrals and that kind of stuff. It's more administrative tasks that should be handled by the prosecution or the clerk's office. And they were just being handled by the wrong person because there wasn't a person that was available to do those tasks.
Yeah, and I actually have those tasks here. Prosecutor's office needs to prepare victim impact statements. And prosecutor's office should be pulling, driving and criminal records and not the court staff. Those were the two recommendations that were in the court audit that were specific to the prosecutor.
And do you see those two recommendations being addressed?
They they are being addressed, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and uh, and and then the last part of this is is recommendations. These recommendations are really just food for thought. And it's things that we've looked at from from our each perspective. Say, okay, how can we make the overall court experience more robust and make this actually work? Um, and so some of the things that we're looking at was just some of the modifications, some of the the judicial orders that are out there right now. Um, because they do challenge us in many ways, you know, and currently right now, if there's warrants are being issued for people. But all the result is is when they get to the jail, they're released on a personal recognizance bond. With the new court date, we can issue a piece of paper, new summons on the street right right in there that has that court date on it. So that way we're not to take somebody into physical custody. Anytime is, you know, we've seen nationally, when a police officer puts hands on somebody, uh, it's potentially dangerous. You know, um, it's scary, you know, because you have to physically detain somebody and arrest them. Then all the staff time and everything else goes along with it. But it's really, it could result in a negative encounter because that person may have a weapon on them or drugs on them or something like that. And if the purpose is just giving a court date, we should be able to do that on the street. Um, and then, you know, and and so, but there there's also some rules with legislative changes that are out there as well that we have to have people in front of a magistrate or a judge within forty eight hours from the time of arrest. And with court dates on Monday, Wednesday and Friday, you know, we believe that we can have a conversation to be able to achieve that. And if we're going to be outside of that forty eight hour limit, because maybe it's a Friday or it's a long weekend to the holiday like Thanksgiving, then again, have the discretionary aspect to build out the court dates, we'll get them there. But we should be able to take people into custody so that they ensure that court appearance. That's the whole purpose of bond. If it's either a signature or a monetary. If it's either a signature or a monetary issue or or anything else is is to make sure that somebody is accountable for their actions before the judge. And that's what we really want, to be able to get that fifty percent of people aren't showing up. Before the judge that they can explain their actions and then go through that due process aspect from there. Um, and then some other aspects of just writing tickets. Um, you know, there's been, again, a lot of changes, but we can make sure that we do those things, we've looked at it, there's capabilities, if if somebody is in custody. That, you know, that we do have the video capabilities to be able to do the advisements, so we don't have to transport anybody back and forth from jail, we can do that electronically now. So again, just food for thought, it's just recommendations that we had here as we were talking about that. But I think the biggest portion of what we need is we just need a a a mechanism to be able to get everybody in the same room, to have conversations to say, okay. You know, when when this happens, this has an effect here. And if this happens, you know, when we do something, it has an effect there and we can have this open conversation just so we can make the system work. And so it's more robust and it actually creates a a way for our community to be better and for for the the citizens in this community to feel safe. And, you know, because it's it's not just about crime, but a lot of this is just small quality of life issues. And we see certain things, you perceive it to be something maybe that's not as as big as it is, but it still has an effect on life. And that's what we see all the time through our emails and and through visitors that come through, it was constant feedback. Um, and that kind of.
May I I just ask one question back to the recommendation? That was not in this packet, right? That's an add on, I didn't miss it.
Uh, no, the recommendations were just part of the PowerPoint, I didn't have it as part.
It was not part of that, right, perfect, I tell I wanted. No.
They should have been on the PowerPoint of the.
Or I'm sorry, I mean, I read them in the agenda.
Okay.
The agenda doc, I mean, this is not the first time I've seen these.
I know, actually, I know it's on. I just want, it wasn't in this packet that I was looking at, though, that's was your discussion, current procedure, options considered, impacts.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, but they're they're in the packet.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, and then there's a real reason why I revealed you here today is because of the continuing issues that we have. And I know currently right now, the Rusa, the camp along Rusa is is a huge topic for conversation. Um, with that, these are some pictures that uh were taken yesterday, uh, some of the potential impacts that are down there. And then we would like to open this up a little bit too, to understand that, you know, without that cost, without that consequence, we don't have deterrents. And this is kind of, you know, what we're looking at um as some impacts within our community, and we're hearing a lot about this right now. Um, from a multitude of different venues and as Deputy Chief mentioned, just small pieces of trash and everything that are along there. And, you know, we're going down there with every single day and communicating with these people and providing them with trash bags. And having conversations with them and extending services to them and letting them know exactly what resources are are there. And um they unfortunately, right now are receiving bad advice from a local defense attorney. Um, that is telling them to to stay in place, accept summonses and they're continuing their coordinates further and further down the road. Um, and just delaying that due process aspect um to be able to get that decision by a judge, which is so critical for us to be able to move forward. Um, with any action that we could potentially take.
And we offered services yesterday and it's refused and and if we're not taking enforcement action unless there's services available or another place to be. Enforcement actions, just like we said, is citations currently.
I I think there's a. I think a lot of the recommendations I've seen, but there's one topic that I really missed, but it's not really under your purview, I guess. Which is, you know, there's some progress taking place with the uh what is the council of homeless. This and the continuum of care model and that's for the people that are willing to move out of homelessness. And and I'm wondering if um if you see any recommendations and changes in your workload and issues, cases and and repeat violators. If we address um. For example, opportunities for uh the homeless in a managed camp. Or with the addiction and mental health, obviously. Would that, because then you're really fixing the cost, you know. And versus what we're looking at here is addressing the consequences in a more efficient way and then trying to go back. Is that something that you see as another one of the key recommendations that should be on there, even though it's not under the police departments or the community?
I wish I had the answer to that one, because I could write a book and I could solve homelessness across the country. I don't know what the true answer to that one is, because as as Deputy Chief said, we know what resources are available to us currently within our community. And there are resources available for people and we extend those to people, but it's their choice not to accept those services, which is the challenge. And so if we just create a whole nother. Group or venue of services to be able to to extend to people, I don't know if they're going to take advantage of it. You know, because the people that that we are helping and we are helping people, we are, we are connecting people with the people that they need to be connected to. They 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 take advantage of it and and they have success. But then there's this outlined group out there, again, that that continues to create us problem after problem after problem after problem. And and regardless of what we do, I don't know if 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 they'll ever accept and change their behavior. And there's some of these people that we're dealing with uh out there that I've been here for eighteen years and 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 I knew them when I was a, you know, a a young cop is in in training. And I was introduced to them with the same behaviors and everything. And there's people that are a sparrow that have rooms there, there's people that have rooms at V O A. That are still living on the river or living in our house, because that's what they do. And even though they already have that service and they're taking up that availability from somebody else, they're still out there. And and that's where.
Two different tents.
And that's where the biggest problem that we're seeing right now is 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 when we're dealing with this, that that's the face of homelessness right now of our own house community. Or is that small segment or group of people that are along the Rusa quarter?
How many people are there?
I mean, between six and fifteen is kind of fortunate. Um, it kind of depends and we're having a hard time with that, because we're going down there and trying to establish communication, figure out who they are, what they need. And they're not coming out of their tents, they're not coming out of their structures, you know, they're not communicating with us. Or when they do see us, they avoid us, you know, so we don't know really because we can't establish that. But that's the challenge and and there there are groups out there that are trying to help them, there's also groups that unfortunately profit from them as well. And, you know, and that provides that negative stigma to that group as a whole, because when the people that are out there, I mean, we have. Extremely gracious community that wants to help people all the time. But how how big of a hand do we lend out there? And then can we figure out that screening mechanism to figure out who is actually going to be accepted so that?
I think every week we're three truckloads of uh trash from there that we're in and most of it's uh.
So it was my understanding that some of the people that camp there. Uh, when police goes there, that you would basically say, there's a place, a place in the shelter, so you can't camp here. But most of the time, there is no place in the shelter, so you can't really send them elsewhere. But from what I hear now is that they have a place and they still, so basically we're saying, anybody can camp anywhere.
And don't don't respond. I understand, not sure that we, that last place, from what I've understood from you guys, there is often is place in.
Absolutely, so we contacted, we contacted the V O A every single month. Uh, actually, yeah, every day we do and and we do it twice a day, actually, because um because we our day shift sergeant and our night shift sergeants contact the V O A. Um, and we we list this on our shift reports every single day and we communicate this out. But the the beds that we that we have trouble getting are just single male beds.
Yes.
There's typically family rooms, veterans rooms, female rooms. But they said upon request, if we need to, if we really, really needed it, if someone was willing to, they would convert convert one of those rooms to meet whatever current need we have. And so if we had a single adult male that was down there and he was like, yeah, I would like to do that, they would probably convert one of those veteran beds over to meet that need. But again, and it's probably even though those those three rooms, we the classifications, we have almost every single night and there's multiple rooms there. It's the single male rooms whi- which we have trouble with, but we still probably have four out of five nights, there's there's availability for that.
Which we offered yesterday to bring them up there and talk to them personally, to get a ride up there and I'll talk to them personally to V O A, see if we get you a room, they're available. And yeah, we'll look into that at some point, maybe, you know.
I I just wanted to say, did you have another point that you were wanting to make?
Yeah, I'm gonna get in the. Well, if I, I'll just finish my point, so thank you for clarifying the available space. So that makes it even almost worse because there is space. And we're not, you're you are not, you don't have the authority or the opportunity. To get rid of people scampering anywhere and saying, there is space. So isn't that more of a different structural problem that we have? That we are not able to say, you can't, you can't, can't, because there's a space for you.
That's what we're waiting for is the due process issue to go through play. Because right now, just because we charge somebody and we bring them forth, we we don't do the judgment aspect of it. And so we, so as as long as they're, if if they abandon their property, we can absolutely seize it. If the property is out there by itself and it's abandoned, we're going to, we're going to take it in, we're going to, we're going to go through it, we're going to try to determine, this is challenging sometimes. What's a value and what's trash and then anything of value, we're going to hold on to safekeeping in our property room. See if somebody's going to claim it, and I believe it's ninety days is which we hold on to that. But the problem that we're finding it down there right now is nobody's vacating those properties, so we don't have an opportunity to seize it. And we can't just grab somebody and force them out of that to be able to clean it up. Because it's such a low level offense that, you know, and and it's and there's this thing called the Fourth Amendment within our constitution that provides. An inalienable rights to to, you know, to to people and property.
Whether the citations are issued, and if they didn't show up, there was a warrant.
Right, and that's the challenge that we're experiencing right now. And 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 if we could get that judicial order in place or a judgment, you know, like i- i- through creative sentencing with the judge. And 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 once we get to that point where we get through a trial, then, you know, there's potential that the judge could say, okay, listen, you've got twenty five camping. Tickets, right, with all these different things. We will combine all those and this will be up to to Jason, you know, to come up with some kind of plea deal, but we'll defer that sentence. You know, if you vacate that. For X amount of time or something like that, so we could put an offer like that on the table. And then if they come in compliance with that, great, we solved our problem. But if they, then if they if they don't, and then they're in contempt of the judge in the sentence, then we can take action based off of that.
Can I um make certain that Melissa has a chance? And then also Jessica, and I also would like to wrap up with some thoughts because of our responsibility of our third appointee who is not here. So I just wanted to open up for, and I'm keeping my eye on the time, so. Uh, about five minutes unless we all agree to uh forego, and I'm happy to do that, to forego um a break.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Um, I'll just comment quickly and just say, I very much appreciate the presentation. Um, and the effort that you are putting into, I think systematically and procedurally. Help address the issue that we're facing, which to me is such a difficult and complex issue that all over the country is facing. But there's so many of us who do really recognize the difficulty of the. The plight of the homeless for the various reasons that they might be experiencing homeless. Um, be it, you know, losing their jobs, mental health, drug addiction, whatever it might be. Um, but also recognize that we also are, you know, here to serve all of the community. And there are issues of quality of life for all residents. Um, and including safety and security of all residents. I appreciate very much the approach that I think we have here in Durango um with our police department. Um, in trying to help the individuals and help those those um. Individual people um experiencing the various issues that they, I I really appreciate that approach. I've seen you working and I um. I I I feel very thankful to be in this community with that type of approach for people. Um, and I also hear you saying that you are lacking legitimacy. And that's just not okay, people can't, people are not immune to the law, even if they're homeless, it does not mean that they cannot follow the law. Um, and I think that we have to have some type of conversation around that. I hear you saying you want to have conversate, more conversation, such that we can have creative sentencing options or creative options.
Thank you. To address this, uh, and I I completely agree with that, I would like to have more of those conversations. I think that rational, we if we can get all the parties around the table, all the stools around the table to address this. Uh, in the most humane way, uh, for the benefit of all residents, I am all for it. So I I would like to continue these conversations, I appreciate the recommendations you've laid out. I think that they offer some specif- specif- uh, some specific examples of how we can do it. Um, and also, um, you know, uh, maintaining that humane approach to helping people. Uh, through uh the different diversion programs, um, and opportunistic with, you know, including access. I think it's, um, I think it it considers the individual and the community at the same time, so I appreciate it. If you'd like to continue the discussion.
Jessica. Yeah, I mean, everything Councilor Yusef just said, I echo, I think um the presentation was great, so much information. Um, it was. So much information that I didn't know and then so I'm really appreciative of that. I think the recommendations, there's some that seem super, like quick wins, like easy to implement, and so I think that that's great. And hopefully we can um, you know, move through those um efficiently and effectively. And then, you know, the creative sentencing options and then um the quarterly stakeholder meetings seem. Like such a great way to move forward, our community is constantly changing. This issue that we're dealing with now, we didn't deal with ten years ago. I mean, when I moved here twenty years ago, there it was, it's not the same community. And so I think being able to creatively change what we need to to address the current problems that we're facing. For all community members um is like the best and most creative, I think, way that we could possibly um do that. And so, you know, I hope that, you know, in the next month, we get um uh Judge Law's recommendations and then we can like.
Yeah.
Know what I'm moving together, so that's all.
Thank you.
Mayor, at the risk of running over, could I speak for just a second?
Please do, yes.
Uh, you asked earlier about some of the suggestions that Judge Law had uh concerning the respective roles of the prosecutors and the clerk's office. Um, let me just say, I totally agree with the Chief of Police that uh this is an intra-governmental. Uh, an interdepartmental group that needs to sort this out. Uh, I think the resources are being stressed a little bit at the moment. Uh, all three of our prosecutors, uh, uh, Mr. Hatfield, Mr. Ely and Mr. Wanger have expressed a willingness to. Um, uh, revisit how we do business from the prosecution side of things. And um. We also probably need to open up the possibility of, in those rare cases where uh some jail time would be appropriate. Uh, those will require some additional resources for defense counsel. Um, and some uh paying the La Plata County jail. Um, but the prosecutors uh have all expressed a willingness to uh work with everybody else and figure out how to make the system run better.
Thank you, thank you so much. Um, first of all, Chief and and Deputy Chief, thank you for your work. And thank you for this presentation, it's very thoughtful and I think it's important for the community to hear what you're trying to do and some of the issues there and um. And I also want to, it's important for you to feel supported by counsel, I think that's very important. I also recognize that we have four counselors here and we do supervise our third appointee. And so the question that I I have is one, I it seems to me that there's a possible. And I also want to start by recognize that there are times where you need a a solid line, right? This is your job, this is my job and we and we are independent, the judge is independent from, you know, I recognize that need for independence. Um, but I also see the need for, um, not on a specific cases, but for the the functioning of the the court. There there should be some possible ways of collaboration. So what I wanted to suggest is one, I I don't think Judge Law has he has seen these recommendations. And I think that's an important first step, I'm not certain how, that's why I'm going to open it up to counsel. Um, you know, we are set, I believe, to get an update in March, that doesn't mean Anna revisions in early April. But perhaps um counsel might want to try to seek an earlier uh discussion around what happens in the municipality. How um, how enforceable could these things be within the municipal court? And what's the uh the inclination, if you will, toward toward that? So I am, I'm feeling it for as one person, as though we we might need a conversation either with the municipal judge. And or a a a an interdepartmental group that actually works to try to say, which of these recommendations can we all three support? The the city attorney, the interim city attorney, the city manager through this and the municipal judge. And I'm wanting to get a sense from counsel of your thinking about that, um, because I also want to make it real clear. We have two of our appointees here, but not the third, and we didn't require that of them or give sufficient, in my mind, probably notice for that. So I want to hold, I'll hold that as on me a little bit too, that maybe they all should have known that it might be a better to be all all of us here if they could make it. But in this case, Sarah wasn't able to make it. Thoughts from counsel on engaging with our third appointee around some of these recommendations?
About thought, do you have any thoughts on the process for that? Um, just because I would think it could work for internet.
Sure, I, you know, I think from a uh, from, you've you've heard me cross functional team, I I love it, it's my buzzword, we do a really great job of it here. Uh, I know from the municipal court side, the. And I know from the municipal court side, the police side, we'd be happy to, to partner in that. I think from a process standpoint, the next step would probably have Judge Law have an opportunity to review kind of the presentation. I know that there has been communication with her, so she can kind of talk a little bit about her perspective and maybe present that to the city council at a time that's convenient for everyone.
I would support that. But yeah, you guys kind of handling that backend thing. And then if we need to be involved or get updates or give feedback.
I, I do believe that a correspondence about listening to this or reviewing it needs to come from counsel rather than from a colleague. Even in the cross-functional, I think that, so if you, if you are, if you're willing to even empower me, I'm happy to send a note that says, here's this meeting. Here's some of the discussion. And I think it might be useful to at least start by reviewing this. And, and then there's support for either a presentation from you or working in a cross-functional manner. Is that.
Sure.
Satisfactory?
I have a, just a little question. Some of the recommendations you have already started implementing, like the excellent, the additional prosecutors. Three days, court days, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. So there's several that are already moving forward. And of these recommendations, which ones do involve the judge? Like if you do the, for example, penalty assessment for traffic violations, is that something that requires a judge input? Or is that something that we can?
Do ourselves.
Do ourselves. Yeah.
Well, I think a lot of it is, you know, the administrative orders, you know, setting up the advisement portions of it, those are, those are going to come from the judge. Obviously, there's going to be some support functions that the clerk's office is going to have, we will provide administratively to be able to make those things happen. But those are the components that are going to, that they're going to need to be by the judge. And I am available, my schedule is, I'll make it happen, you know, to be in the same room. Absolutely. Any, any given time that the council wishes to, to have that conversation.
But she was not involved in hiring extra prosecutors or what's.
No, because that's, that was separate and autonomous. And that, and that actually was in process when Dirk was here as well to start that process. It just, again, because of, you know, the transition within that office, it just got delayed a little bit. And so that one kind of already, yeah, solved itself. And so there's some of those things that, that are, that are working through. As, as things happen. And I'm sure some of the other things that we're looking at, when they're starting to make the recommendations on those additional days with the court. That should also align that a little bit easier too, because that way the judge isn't trying to do the prosecutor's job. And then we just put more structure in place to be able to meet some of these other needs.
So I support that.
Good. So what I'll do is I'll write a note to our appointee, copy counsel. And suggest looking at this presentation, particularly the recommendations. An opportunity to come back to us with, as a presentation in some manner with the issues. And then on looking at it within the. Independent jurisdictions, still the possibility of a cross-functional team to look at the, the issues and which one of these makes most sense. So I will draft that note and take care of that. I want to make certain you know how valued that you all are, and I appreciate that. And thank you for being, coming back here and sharing with us the challenges you face.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, counsel.
I'd like to ask if counsel would like to take maybe a three-minute break and then we'll start back up. And that will allow Devon some time to get her materials up on the screen if necessary. Three minutes, please.
That you know it and that we, we appreciate the work that you did and you'll definitely be missed. But we're lucky to have you still for, for a few weeks as we go through and just appreciate your work, Cynthia. Thank you.
To jump in just for a minute, as an old timer here, maybe not as an old timer as, as also Yusef, I'm older though.
But you saw a lot.
Yeah, no, what I, I was going to say, as I often describe Cynthia, as you came into work and you had to put all ten fingers in the dam. To hold it from, you know, just spilling over. And I want to recognize that. I want to recognize what you walked into. We were in the midst of embezzlement case. The guardrails were not in place. We had policies that needed to be. Considered and put in place that, you know, from the capital improvement policy to other issues for our reserve policies. Just a variety of things on all fronts that had to be addressed. And so I personally want to acknowledge the hard work you've done and the, the better position you have put us in. So, thank you.
I sure would echo that. Really appreciate all your help. I'll just never forget some of the situations. They were dire. And you really came in, you jumped right in and really appreciate your help straightening the ship. And implementing all the processes and procedures and systems that we now have. So thank you so much.
I wasn't here during all the crazy dire things, but I just want to say thank you. I have enjoyed, you know, having you leading the ship and taking over. And I feel like it's probably one of the hardest jobs in the city. I think people, it's so easy to throw stones when you're sitting way in the back or even at the table sometimes. And I feel like you've taken them with grace. And, you know, shown the facts straight away. And I just hope people know that there's so much more that goes into what you do than just reports and numbers. And, you know, you struggle with staffing, just like the rest of the world. You struggle with, you know, dealing with, you know, different partners that are struggling with staffing. And so I hope, you know, the public and counsel, all of counsel, you know, take that into consideration, especially for your replacement. That's coming into and, you know, making sure that we're kind and treat everyone with respect.
Hey, with that, Mayor and Counsel, we, Devin Schmidt, Budget and Strategic Plan Officer. We have a presentation on the financial reports, as Jose mentioned. What we're really looking for is if the reports are providing enough information for, for counsel. Or if there's anything we can do differently. When Cynthia and I had chatted about this, we were looking to kind of tag in the presentation. So we'll kind of walk through it. And I did go ahead and print that out of council recalls. This was tabled. It was supposed to be January seventeenth.
I have a suggestion. Would you prefer that we, if, my suggestion is that we let you go through the whole presentation and then come back and ask questions on different. Items, because I, I recognize that the last time you didn't have enough time. So I want to make certain that you have what you need to make this presentation. Is that preferred to go through it completely and then take questions?
Either way is good.
Sure.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. So as we mentioned, this was set to be on January seventeenth. The Landers Tax Conversation went on and we wanted to make sure we had enough time for counsel conversation and discussion on this topic. And so our presentation outlined, did you want to go over that one, Cynthia?
Sure. Cynthia State Finance Director for another couple of weeks. Alrighty. So this slide just talks about the, the different pieces and parts that we have to comply with. And that affect the, the progression of where we've been. So we're going to walk through kind of the evolution of the various reports and the underlying guidance that it, that we have to abide by to get there. Okay, the evolution of financial reporting. So we, we really produce three distinct types of reports. And this, this really puts into a chronology of where, where we started in two thousand nineteen and where we are today. So starting with the monthly financial reports that come out of the budget area. Way back in two thousand seventeen, it sounds like a long time ago, but it really wasn't all that long ago. It, it really was just budget and actual information that was spit out from the financial system, not entirely user-friendly. And it really just told at the high level, at the fund level. So then, as we implemented the Open Gov, that really became much more refined. We, in two thousand twenty-one is when we really included the budget actuals. With the, the charts and the graphs and all of those things that really make it more user-friendly. And that's obvious, definitely on Devon's. Feather in her cap for that. And then for the act for previously caper. Back in, well, we didn't even issue two thousand and twenty-one until two thousand and twenty-three or something. Anyway, we, we, we issued, we did have an unmodified opinion, but we also had material weaknesses. And that was all happening at the same time as we had the two other audits, the forensic audit and the internal control examinations. That was a really big effort, big, heavy lift for all of us in finance at the time. Then the next year it improved. We did still continue to have an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion to have. We did have a material weakness again, but by this time we, we were getting better and better. And we were able to recapture the GFOA Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting. So that was. That next improvement. And then in two thousand twenty-one, we issued more timely. It was still a little bit late, but compared to where we had come, we were much, much more on time with that. Again, an unmodified opinion. And we did have an audit adjustment, but that's a far better place to be than the material weaknesses. And then we have applied for the GFOA Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting, but we have not yet received the results of that. We have every reason to believe we will be awarded that again, because we met all of the, all of the criteria. And then two thousand twenty-two, we're, it's in progress now. We're, finance is very deeply involved in getting that together now. So that's where we've been on that. And on the budget, I'm going to let Devon talk about that because that's definitely her, her baby.
Awesome. So some of councilor members that the two thousand twenty budget was prepared in word. There was a ten million dollar error, among other errors. We had to adopt in December, re-adopt in April. There was no GFOA award. So projects were also not reauthorized. It was a rolling budget. And so there was no reappropriation from counsel. And as we look into two thousand twenty-one, with Jose's arrival. We started the process to, at the very end of twenty-one to implement Open Gov. We were in the process of, we moved that to Excel. And with Jose's leadership, it was, let's really kind of get back to the basis. And let's kind of pull out some of those performance metrics so that we can make sure that the financial information is correct and that we're moving the ship in the right direction. We also, for two thousand twenty-one, Colorado Government Finance Officers Association did utilize our fund summaries as a best practice for Colorado. So they use that in their presentations. As we move into two thousand twenty-two, this was the first budget in Open Gov. We did receive the GFOA Distinguished Budget Award for two thousand twenty-two. And we received special recognition for our strategic plan information that we included. We also went back to including performance metrics and including some of that detail at a department divisional level. Two thousand twenty-three, so we're pivoting really to that budgeting for outcomes model. Which is showing that true, true tie and those cost of dollars for what it costs to achieve the strategic plan. We were the beta testers for the strategic plan goal area for Open Gov. And so really looking forward to that full functionality in the two thousand twenty-four budget process. And then something that I think is really, really unique for an entity that's the size of our organization is that we're in the top five percent of utilizing. For like-sized Open Gov clients for our two thousand twenty-three budgets. So we're really utilizing that tool. And another piece that I'd like to kind of include on that is that the City of Durango has an Open Gov Transparency Portal and Budget Books. With a similar utilization and feel to the City of Minneapolis and the City of Oakland, California. I think that's really important to footnote because those municipalities serve a population of around 425,000 citizens. And they, we have about 18% of the budget staff that those folks have. So we're up there with some of the largest open glove clients there. So in what we're providing. And then, you know, we've talked a lot about the Finance Officers Association. The words are important. It doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, we're gold star, that we're perfect. We're always working on continuous improvement. But it's really a recognition that the city is advancing in excellence in public finance. And so we're putting into place those best practices that GFOA recommends in all of these areas and the monthly financial reports, in the annual comprehensive financial report and in the annual budget. So I just wanted to kind of highlight, you know, where we've come from and where we are today as it relates to our monthly financial reports or the Act for and the annual budget. So when we move on and we're looking at our 2022 monthly financial reports. The charter requirement says that we have to have an effective day to day operation and handling of receipts and disbursements for the city's funds. A monthly statement of receipts and expenditures in such a manner that city council has enough details to determine compliance with the budget requirements and to determine the financial condition of the city. And that these statements should be made available for public inspection. Wanted to note that both the previous city attorney and the current interim city attorney agree that our monthly financial reports are in compliance with charter. In addition, for folks that maybe didn't know, Open Gov updates every single night at 12:33 AM specifically. So at 12:34 the next day, you can see that budget to actuals information and that's available at any time. So did want to highlight that. That's on our financial transparency portal. You can find it on their city manager's office, also under the finance office for that information. So that's available at any time. When we are looking at GASB, so the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, that's the standard setting boards that establishes the general accepted accounting principles for the annual comprehensive financial report. I know finance and Cynthia and her team are always trying to keep up with the latest GASB changes and rulings. Sometimes they can even be embedded into an $858 billion National Defense Authorization Act. And so it's certainly a process to try and keep up with what those are. And then GFOA. So this is part of a GFOA article that talks about best practices. And I think what this part really demonstrates is, and I'll read it, is what it says is financial transparency takes on a lot of different aspects and doesn't just center on making a financial report available for review. Each government entity has to weigh into what type of information is most beneficial to publish for the public, how the public will interpret the information provided, knowing and understanding the needs of the community regarding transparency, along with the cost benefit of providing specific levels of transparencies are all factors that must be considered when implementing financial transparency in any entity. So I think when we're looking at that component in that piece there, our teams have certainly tried to put forward best practices as we're looking at the budget process or the monthly financial report to try and have that storytelling component to it. And then, of course, with the strategic plan, this component falls under financial excellence and high performing government and that fiscal sustainability. So adding in those fund balances that council had requested on a monthly basis. Looking at some of that trend analysis as we're doing some of the reports and we're thinking about forecasting the budget. So there's certainly a lot that goes into those pieces, but it's not a static environment. We live in a changing world. I have the privileges here to be on the Colorado Government Finance Officers Association Education Community. And so that'll allow us to really stay in the forefront. But we're also able to share some best practices from Drango with that component of it. As as we're looking at how we utilize Open Gov, our budgeting techniques, utilizing the budgeting for outcomes, our public engagement process. Where historically we would host a town hall and no one would show up. Now we're trying to go out to the folks by partnership with the college and going to the farmer's market and all of these different avenues that we're trying to implement. And then staff is always continuously seeking information from GSOA and the the GASB rulings. I know Cynthia certainly has to have certain amount of CPE credits to maintain her CPA licensing. So we're certainly not staying in a stagnant, static environment. We're constantly looking to see different areas where we can improve and that we are still following those practices and especially those GASB rulings. So when we are discussing the 2022 monthly financial reports, we wanted to highlight some of those changes. So they're interactive. The public can view the reports and the additional information through the transparency portal. We include metrics in it. So that's that caution or needs focus or positive. So council is aware where areas where there may require intervention intervention. And then narratives, we're really working to put narrative into place that gives it the proper context behind it. So why is something the way it is? What are we seeing? Or how did we end up where we receive more revenues than we anticipated and things of that nature? And then for fund balances, those are reviewed on a monthly basis and reported back to council and the public as part of the reports. We certainly have a few members of the community that are very engaged in this process. And so when we're thinking about putting out a December report, for example, if we put that out prematurely, we could end up with additional questions, concerns. The AP process doesn't close until January 25th and that's allow, that allows our vendors and staff to be able to book and finance to book those accounts payable processes back. There's compensated absences, our insurance carrier with our stop loss. Those can be not necessarily very timely by the time they come back to us and those get booked back. Any claims that occurred in December that took a while to process are also something that would get looked back to December. And not to mention, you know, finances working diligently on their W2 process at the beginning of the year per federal requirement. So there's a lot of pieces to that January report when we're looking at that piece. So part of what we do is we look at whether other city entities are doing. So looking at some of the best in class cities. Some cities will just produce a monthly income statement or budget to actuals, which is what our report is showing. So it's just showing your receipts and your expenditures, your revenues. It's just that there's no fund balance information and that's on a monthly basis. Open Gov already does that for us. Some of those also don't even produce a quarterly report until May of the following year. And then another municipality that we looked at only does quarterly reports for quarter one, two, and three. So and their Open Gov is only updated through October. So if we're looking at some of what the other communities are doing related to some of these year end monthly reports. We're all sensitive to it. We're all sensitive to, we want to put forth the best information. We want to make sure that some of the information is done. But, you know, and Cynthia can obviously attest to this more than I can, but the Act for is really that that year end, that audited complete buttoned up beautiful package for that prior year. So
I just want to add a little more context to what Devon has already talked about. What it takes a little bit longer to get the December numbers and therefore the, not only the December monthly, but the quarter end, of course. So that's really rooted in the accounting standards. We have to, we must follow accrual accounting, which means we need to look, wait for a couple of months yet into the new year to see if any of those transactions actually relate to transactions that occurred in December and prior. And that's just the passage of time. We have no control over a lot of the timing of that. So we've got, as Devon indicated, accounts payable, we're waiting for invoices from vendors for work that they did in the old year so that we can book that back. And revenue earned, if the revenue was actually earned in the old year, we, but we don't receive that money until January or February. We still need to book that back. So it's an incomplete picture at the first couple of days of January, which is typically what we would do. So the 11 month, other 11 months, we are much more timely in getting that out. But for the year end, we must according to accounting standards, wait some time to to book things back from the prior year. So and then once we get all of that trued up, then we have adjusting entries that need to be done. But we need to have good numbers before we start doing that. So all of that takes time. And as as Devon indicated, we also, inside of finance, we're doing our federal compliance of W2 processing and 1099 processing and all of that. So it just, it just takes a little bit of time. So.
And if I can add one, you know, additional kudos to Cynthia prior to her arrival, the purchase orders would roll every year as part of that rolling budget component to it. And so that's another piece that she implemented where it's a end of the year stop, start over with a new purchase order. Just to make sure that some of that stuff didn't need to roll. I mean, I remember looking in there and we had stuff back to like 2010 in some cases. So so as we look into kind of our continuous improvement, what we're looking to do in 2023, so performance metrics. Looking to track the budget at tools at a 96% accuracy. Staff and council has really worked on a partnership where we're not trying to have contingencies necessarily in our budgets. We're more coming back to council to say, hey, we need an additional appropriation for this and here's why. That's been a great partnership. So the days of, wow, you understand your budget by 50%. That's not a, that's not a gold star situation. It's we're really looking for folks to be asking for what we need to manage the operations of the city. So that's one component and that'll be on the revenues and expenditures. So we'll be tracking that at a fund level and then we could break that down to a department level if there is interest. Better storytelling, I talked a little bit about this and the narrative, staff is really looking to address any variances or provide that memo to council and the public. And so council may have noticed on the quarter four report, we did include some noteworthy items. And so those were some of the areas that were kind of outliers as we're looking at the report and looking at some of that information. And then Cynthia's team was looking at the investment performance. So I'll let her talk about that component of it.
Yes. So we did implement a brand new investment program recently at the very tail end of of last year. So we will see better returns coming in because of that, where we will be holding individual securities in our name rather than what we've been doing is a pooled environment similar to on a personal finance side, you might have mutual funds or something where you really, you're just one, one player in a big pool and you don't have any say in anything. We will hold individual securities in our name and have a lot more impact on that. So we will, because of that, we will be reporting the performance of that portfolio to council on a regular basis. That'll be new.
Okay. With that, I think we'd like to turn it back over to council to answer any questions and direction for, you know, really if there, council has enough information to make those informed decisions with all of the different financial data that comes out of finance in the budget office.
Thank you. Thank you, Devon and Cynthia for your hard work. I'm noticing the time. It's right now, our proposed schedule has us ending at 4:30. We have in the past gone over. So I'm going to, I just want to make certain everyone's aware of that as we prepare our questions. So I then just want to open it up to, for questions of Cynthia or Devon or the city manager.
Quite a few, but I'll let the other counselors go first. No, because hopefully bring up some of the questions I asked.
I know I'll go at the very end.
Why don't you start with a couple and we can like walk, go around and then decide if we're going to go over.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm being polite here. Just try and let you guys go first.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So I think the first, I have quite a few topics here. I think the first thing is to meet the charter requirements. And I think there's discussion about whether we do or we not. There's some people in our community that.
One moment, I want to call in Bill Tuttle as well. Sorry. Bill, are you still on this call? Bill? I want to make certain he's panelist so he can speak if you're talking about the charter. Bill, did you, we're going to promote you to panelist, I think.
Okay.
I, I, I think you could hear it. The first question referenced the charter. So I wanted to make certain you were accessible. Thank you.
Okay.
So, so that would be the first requirement, obviously. And, and I, I'm going to just explain a little bit what I would like to see in a certain format. So it helps me be better informed. So that would mean monthly statements of assets and liabilities to certain agreements available, monthly statements of income and expenses. And hopefully more in line, my preference would be more in line with the Act for which would give a monthly update of the financial condition of the city as a whole. Then that that should be no brainer in my opinion, but this is my personal opinion as one counselor and to a large degree this included in what you already provided.
Okay. So I have a question. I just have a question. Why do you roll your eyes? I have a question for you. So I'm, I want to know what is not included that you want to see? Because you said a lot of this is already included. So why are we bringing it up if it's already included?
And I'm going to also join in that you may have one request as a counselor, but you need a majority of consensus to actually direct any staff. I want to, what should be included that isn't already included?
I just want to know what's not included.
I'm going to finish my point.
Why do we have to go so long if it's already included? And you make it seem like it's not included, like we're doing something wrong, when that's not the case. When two city attorneys have said that we meet the charter requirements. Like it was in the presentation. So if we're not meeting them, what do you need that's not included?
Please answer.
I am going to make my.
You're gonna dilute it and convolute it and make it seem like we're doing something wrong, even though we're not.
So I'm just going to point out, so for the record, right now, we've been received a presentation and Counselor Bosman is making a statement about what he would like to see, but we're not clear what he, what isn't in the report that he's not seeing.
So the, the, on the Act for, the 2021 Act for, for example, on page 32 gives you a clear statement of assets and liability in a one page format. The, the other example would be the income and expenses, which would be on page 33 of the 2021 Act for, which would be a very clear one page summary. And then another one that would be very beneficial to me on a monthly basis, it's again one, one page is the total fund balance summary, which you've already provided, not as part of the monthly quarterly updates. But it shows all the fund balances. And then a total of, I think the total is over 80 million. But I've had, as you probably know, a lot of questioning from counselors that the number is not correct. But I was provided by that form before, and I think would be beneficial and it prevents discussion on council. What is our total fund balance broken down by all individual funds?
So I'm going to stop just for a moment because I, I'm not going to allow total all this. I'd like to know, first of all, if I may, Bill Tuttle and Cynthia are to meeting the charter, we don't necessarily have to provide monthly reports that correlate with the annual financial comprehensive report. Is that correct?
That is my understanding that it, it's really more about the revenues.
The revenue expenditures.
Relates to the budget.
So you're asking Counselor Bosman's for something that correlates to something that's produced on an annual, the big beautiful picture as Devon called it. So I want to make that clear. You're asking for something that's different than what we're required to produce. And I'd also like to make clear that you've requested an additional information from staff that would also require all of council or a majority of council to support that extra workload.
I, I'm just speaking as one counselor and if there's no counsel support, that's another story. And I'm not speaking of complying necessarily with the charger. Charter, as in everything is what, what, what is one part of it is for counselors to be updated on the financial condition and to be able to make good decisions and provide good direction. So to me, to have that overview, and I think it's with Open Gov, the system in place, it's probably a relatively easy thing to print out, throw in an agenda package on a monthly basis or preferably on council. The next, the next item I have, which was the the capital projects summary, I had requested this before, it was presented to the council in December. And I must say, it was a very useful two page document. And I would like to see that included, maybe not on a monthly basis, but on a periodic basis during the year. For example, and, and there was. For example, and, and there was concerns I have with what I see and to have consistent information. And I'll give you a couple of examples to make it clear. The. Water fund, or to state water fund, the water fund capital projects. For 2022. In the budget was 10 million. The amended budget was 5.9 million when we were presented it in December. So it was including actuals and accomplices. It was 1.6 million. And then I think the infrastructure advisory board was presented 2.5 million completed. And of course, I understand that during different dates, there's changes to the numbers, as you said, Cynthia. It takes some time for numbers to be counted for, being looked back. But the not, the difference in the numbers is, is quite a bit. And I think it would be very beneficial for council, at least for me, to see at the end of the year, so beginning of the year. For the past year, what the actual numbers were for capital projects that were completed compared to the budget. So that council, as well as all advisory boards, have the same actual numbers for prior years.
Excuse me one moment, please. Yes, I was going to call on the city manager. And if you don't cover what I would think you might want to cover, I will add something.
Just, I think just from a point of clarification for staff. Understand the comments, and I think it's, you know, absolutely your, your opinion to be able to do that and express those. I do think from a staff perspective, it is a bit unfair that we don't know that. That's what you're going to be asking and you're referencing reports and it's out there, but we don't have a chance to know that that's what's coming and be able to respond to that. So I'm not saying that you're wrong, but I do think that from a staff component, it's not fair for us to not be able to say, well, let me tell you why that's not right. And instead, I think there may be a perception that comes off of like, oh, these numbers don't line up. And we came to talk about a monthly financial report and the information that we're providing. So just my, my, my viewpoint on, on that information.
And I would like to clarify that. What we're having here is a conversation or hopefully we want a conversation rather than. An forum to put things out there that we don't have a chance to respond to, as particularly in staff's point. I will also remind folks that we, at any point, council can say, I, I'd like to have a quarterly report or a report on the CIP. And the city manager has more than complied. And finally, any counselor has the right to, and I would expect to use Open Gov. So not to be creating work for anyone else. It is accessible at 12:33 every day.
I think for me to drop on board with some of the things you're saying, like I'm, I would like to sit, like, I want you to say, I would like. We talk about one, a capital improvement project report every quarter. And then we can like say, oh yes, I support it because right now you're going on and on and on, and I am tuning you out. Because I don't even understand or have any of these numbers in front of me. And so if you pick up one thing at a time, instead of going on huge mon soliloquy that you're doing. That maybe we can actually get on board with something you're saying, or at least say no, and then we can move on. Okay, great. Let's go.
That's because in the.
So let's pick up with capital improvement projects. I'm just picking up where you left off. Well, you made the point that you'd like it on a monthly basis.
To me, as a counselor, and I gave an example, that was just an example. I'm not saying the numbers are wrong. I'm just saying they're in different points in time. It changes.
Yeah, of course, a budget is a budget and then actuals are actual. They should change. It's real life.
So for me, it is useful to have, you have the budget capital projects list with the total, which was 54 million last year. And then mid-year, you see an update to how much we have completed. Or we anticipate staff says, we, we're not going to do this project. There's 10 million left on the table.
We did that. We had a mid-year adjustment with that exact thing. So the thing is, is that you make it seem like we're not doing our job, Olivier. And it's not okay when this exactly happened. Devon brought that forward for the mid-year adjustment and we got those numbers. And then we got it in December again. So what else do you want?
So to me, it would be useful to see that mid-year, see what's left on the table.
Which we did see.
And I have not seen that list, the table that I asked staff to update. So here we, I don't want to argue with you. I want to, so basically my point is, it would be great if we have the capital projects. As one big list adding up to 54 million, I think for 2023, which was provided, and I appreciate that. So that is the budget, a mid-year.
I'm gonna, we're gonna stop here.
What do you want that you don't have?
Let me also say that.
The actuals for 2022 that were completed.
Because we're still finishing them.
Exactly.
Okay, so can we finish them? And then can we get it?
About the financial reports that we want to see. I would like, and I'm bringing forward, I would like.
When you have it done, I would love it twice a year. I think twice a year for, I think twice a year for capital improvement, like summary would be amazing. So. And then end, which we've gotten before.
So I heard Jessica say twice a year. I heard Olivier say three times.
Twice a year is good, but it starts with the budget. So the budget is the start.
Just like last year's.
So, so we're looking at a twice a year report on capital improvement projects. I'm before, I will also remind folks that some people miss the study sessions. But we have had several capital improvement project, uh, study session discussions. Specific to different, the water fund, this fund, everything. So is there support as we think about the reports? And we're not talking the monthly reports right now because we've gone, that was what the agenda is here, but adding in reports. Is there support among council to have twice a year a prescribed capital improvement project update?
The one page.
Yeah, and just a little bit clarification, Counselor Bosman's. Because then on a quarterly basis, which we haven't done for quarter four yet, but we did in 2022 for. Quarter one, two, and three, provide a capital projects report that has the little heat map with the. Little where those are living and on where they're at, and whether they're. And what phase of construction they're in, pre-design, construction complete. So I guess I just want to understand.
That's a good question. Because I'm referring to the presentation that was made on December 6th by the capital projects manager.
Jennifer Holland.
And that was a one page document that shows all the capital projects with the total number, not a large, complex. Report, but it was just a table that showed that summary.
I believe staff did that at your request. And so maybe the. If I could add clarity, it's that you're not wanting the quarterly report, you're wanting a report in the format that you've requested.
For me, that is a very, that is the best document I've seen on capital projects that shows in the beginning of the year, what we have budgeted for mid-year. I haven't seen because nothing took place. And then in December, we saw that update. To that one page list of capital projects that gave you a very clear summary of this project.
Well, and I think if I may, Counselor Bosman, we did on the quarter two financial reports in June, we did do it. It ended up being three pages. Because it has that mapping component in there and it does have all of the projects listed out. And then if should somebody want to have additional detail, they certainly can. So I just want to understand that we're providing the, the format. What Jennifer Holland created was out, I mean, she would receive the information from the budget team, but it was outside of the Open Gov process. So just trying to understand what council would like to see in that regard.
Liked that one, the map one that you guys did. I, and, and if it's easier for Open Gov, like that's also an issue, that's also the issue too. Is we have gotten misinformation. It's just not the way you like it. And you are throwing a fit about it. We literally have gotten this information. I'm fine with the way that you present it always.
So maybe the public hasn't heard Devin, but for the record, I want to make clear that the city did provide capital improvement projects. On a quarterly basis for the first three quarters, and I believe the last quarter was basically Jennifer's update on that. So the question is, does it need to be in the format that Counselor Bosman's appreciates, which is outside of the scope of pulling from Open Gov and requires. Probably some hand manipulation, or do you have a preference for what has been provided or some other manner?
I enjoy the original one out of Open Gov, and I don't want to waste staff time.
I'm very, you know. That we're in compliance, which is the most important thing for me. And. I really appreciate Open Gov. I think not everybody is familiar with it and able to access all the information. However, I have also heard staff. Numerous times suggest that they are willing to sit down with anyone who is interested in getting tutorial and that. I'm not interested in creating additional work. I think that. You, if, if we can pull that on, if we can pull the, in, in, get that information on a. Twice a year, that's great. You know, I. I don't see the need to, to have you go outside of that to then spend staff time to do another one. I don't know.
Okay. Do you have another report you want included in something that we can talk about?
I have two little comments, but I'll do them towards the end because they're not, they're a little bit related, but they're on the edge of it, so.
The biggest thing for me is that we're in compliance with the charter and as long as both city attorneys say that we are in compliance. I feel like the information is there. I use Open Gov all the time before I go into salt fam meetings before, like I have reports that I. That we set up when I sat down with you guys when we first started it, and then I can run for the airport for like all the boards and commissions I sit on, I utilize it all the time. I find it relatively easy to use and understand. And so my biggest thing in looking at this and direction saw is that we are meeting. The charter and that we are continuing best practices and that you were continuing to tidy things up and make things go quicker and. And, and we are doing that. And so I'm excited about that. I'm excited about progress. And so that is my two cents on this topic.
I will also just jump in because we're going to have to have council discussion to go over in a minute here. I appreciate the fact that we not only are, but have been meeting the charter requirements. I appreciate the regular strategic plan updates, the budget information updates. I recognize. The difficulty in closing down a year, a December, the financial requirements that you have that can make that a little longer. I think that if people need specialized reporting. Then there's an obligation, if that's a council member that needs specialized reporting, there's an obligation to sit down with staff to, with Jose's. Permission and understanding to understand what all is involved in providing that specialized. Format and information. And is there a other way to use the Open Gov that we've been so. Actively pursuing to actually meet the need for information. So. It's, I think it's a real balance between, we definitely want to have the information and you're doing that with the capital improvement and the monthly. But if people need it in an individual format, I think there really needs to be a discussion of staff's time involvement that after. An individual maybe appointment to look at, how can I make Open Gov work for me? And thank you, Jessica, for actually doing that. I appreciate the. Effort to understand the system. It may be a little counterintuitive, but you've got it working for you. Thank you. Will staff be willing, or will council be willing to go at least another 10 minutes on this discussion?
Yeah.
Counselor Bosman's?
Yeah, I.
Are you willing to go another 10 minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I, the reason I asked it is because. I think our community, a council, and anybody who's interested should be able to have access without having to live open golf. To see fund balances, capital projects, progress. And an example on that topic is that, no, actually, no, I won't go in there. The two additional questions I have on financial and reporting, is there, I mean, a lot of people say we spend too much on consultants. Is there a way for staff to come up with separating consulting expenses from actual construction projects? Or at least think about, maybe.
I don't support that.
Well, there's, feel free to jump in. I mean, there's two object codes. There's professional services, which is more for. Folks that have licenses, so accountants, attorneys, things of that nature. And then there's other contracted services, which is the other object code. And so that component is there. We also, when we sign up with Open Gov, we're going to look at doing kind of a checkbook report. With knowing where we're at with our city attorney, having an interim at this current point, certainly not everything is. We can put everything out there. So that is something that we would look forward to implementing, hopefully in 2023 after, you know, the city has a. City attorney that's, that's on board because we would be able to then produce that checkbook report, which shows you could come in and look at really any entity. You could search for a vendor, you could see a lot of different information, but we need to understand for core of what can be. Pushed out there and what cannot be because there are certain things that can't be. And so, once we have a city attorney in place, that would provide the opportunity for folks in Open Gov to be able to go in and search for a certain, how much have we paid this vendor? Today, things of that nature. So, and that does date back to 2020, I believe, so.
I, one of the objectives, or one of the reasons I ask, it would be. I mean, it's numbering out of accounts, but it would be nice to be able to pull up project, for example, and. Break it down by contractor consulting, let's say on a project, we spent $5 million. And then you click on the codes, whatever, and it says 4 million went to the, whatever, road construction. And 1 million went for, for the initial design, engineering, blah, blah, blah. So then you could say, okay, here, you have, click, click. Example of this project, the breakdown in that sense. And then the reason why. Asked you to think about it is because I know some projects get awarded to consulting firms who subcontract the contractor work. And that's where the difficulty lies because you're, and end up paying a consultant for the both parts. And that's a little bit where I'm thinking, how do we make that visible? At a certain point, it requires some thoughts, I think. Anyway, didn't want to put you on the spot, but something to think about because I think that would be beneficial as a counselor to see and be able to see. That's all I have.
Great. I would like to say. I believe every counselor is committed to transparency. No one counselor has the market share of that commitment. Every counselor is concerned, and I'd like to say, the progress I've seen since 2019. In the transparency is phenomenal. Can we always have continuous improvement? Yes, absolutely. But I believe that there is, each counselor has that commitment, takes it seriously. May not agree on what all is needed because they're balancing staff time and other efficiencies. But I want to thank you for giving us this report. I want to remind the community that we are in compliance. With our charter, that we do provide capital improvement project updates on a quarterly basis. We also provide special. Not special study sessions where we in the past through August and into the autumn, talked about specific. Funds, what enterprise fund, the. The water, the sewer, the trash and recycling, where we talked about in those study sessions, the capital improvement projects and the progress there. On that note, I want to thank you both. And Cynthia will end with, again, thank you for your service. But Devin, let me also thank you. You were there in the hard times of those. The, the budgets being done in a word document and expel. And you handled that all with grace, even though it wasn't in your bailiwick at the time, but I, I, I think we want to give, I want to end with just. Recognizing your work. Thank you for this effort. I know that new councils will have questions. New council members, and I appreciate your willingness at all times to meet with any counselor. To make certain that they understand the constraints, that they understand the Gatsby rule accounting, and that they understand what we're trying to achieve. On that note, thank you so very much, and we will come back as a council at 5:30.
Thank you.